All right, welcome to the boardroom. We're so glad to have everybody with us, guests and people who are here for appointments. As always, we call them in the order we stand and we have a prayer and pledge. So if everyone would stand at this time, please. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Lynn Green to lead us in the prayer, then we'll do our pledge.
That is right. Father, we come to you tonight as humble as we know how, thanking you for your grace and your mercy, for forgiveness of sin. We thank you that you are our Savior and we honor you tonight. Father, we pray that you'd help us tonight to do the business of this county to the best of our ability, following your guidance. Father, we pray that you bless our servicemen and women abroad that are fighting for our freedom, give them victory over our enemy. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Hey, Commissioner Brown, would you do the pledge, please?
Attention, salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much, you can be seated. At this time, I want to recognize any veterans present in the meeting tonight. Veterans Day was this past Friday and we appreciate all the servicemen and women who have served and we can't say enough thanks to you men and women. So if you've served in the armed forces regardless of whatever branch it was, would you please stand so we could recognize you tonight? And remain standing. I want you to state your name and the branch you're in.
Tony Brown, United States Navy.
Doug Gooch, United States Navy.
Louis Carroll, United States Navy.
Frank Dean, US Army.
Oscar Creech, the best, United States.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate you. All right, gentlemen, we always need to be respectful and thank those who need to be thanked. At this time, let's move to the approval of our minutes. You have the minutes before you, gentlemen. You've had opportunity to read those, look over those minutes. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, approve the minutes for October 9th, October 30th, and November the 3rd.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, light side. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we have our agenda before us tonight. Are there any deletions or additions to the agenda by staff or commissioners?
Deletion, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Abernathy is actually at the Manufacturing Open House and cannot be here tonight, so he has a very good excuse.
All right. Duly noted. Any others? There being none, what's the pleasure of the board concerning adopting tonight's agenda?
Make a motion, adopt.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye and opposed, light side. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we'll go ahead and begin with our first appointment and we have got Mr. Doug Gooch with us tonight and he is here to talk about the impact that veterans have upon McDowell County. So, Mr. Gooch, come forward, sir. We hear you gladly and thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you, Chairman Walker. I appreciate your time and the ability to come before you guys. Thank you, Mr. Woodin, for bumping me up on the schedule as well. I have a commitment beyond this and I appreciate the opportunity. As a matter of just introduction, most of you know that my prior life was in the schools business. I was thirty-one and a half years with the school system, taught for eighteen years as a marketing instructor. I was a CT director. Barry wondered what should call me. They called Mary Mom now, so I don't know if I'm Dad or what I was, but I was called Dean an awful lot due to my father and Dean Buff was my predecessor. But my background in the military goes back for some time. I was a dependent for seventeen years. My dad was a twenty-three-year career man in the Air Force. I was three years active, two years active reserve in the Navy. My boy kept the pirates off the ship here recently from 'oh six to '10. He was in the Navy and he's back home with us now. My brother, you may know, Larry Gooch, he is retired Lieutenant Colonel in the Air Force and he currently works at the ugly place called the VA. So we kind of put up with him and he's currently down at Salisbury working down there. First of all, I want to appreciate the support that I get from this guy right back here, Mr. Woodin, and just the overall staff at the Senior Center. Folks, those are some great folks over there if you get an opportunity to go over there. They're all one big team, they pull together and I'm just pleased as I can be. Mr. Green knows that I was a pretty happy camper with the school system, but when I went over to the Senior Center, it just caught my eyeball, what a great staff they've got over there and I think largely to this guy. I've been accredited by the State of North Carolina since twenty, early 2015. It took me a couple of years, I'm a slow learner, so it took me a while to get through. Actually, it took a while for the state to get some of their ball of wax together, but we're now proceeding with claims and have done some pretty good things. Here primarily, just Waylon and I had a discussion, I always give him a memo about an update about what's going on with veterans and I think some of the statistics I'm going to share with you tonight, hopefully we'll just kind of catch your eyeball in terms of the economic impact. My old head as CT Director, I was very concerned about workforce development and those type of things and the economic impact and so this kind of translates pretty easily in terms of what's going on and how it affects you guys and our coffers as we all are citizens of this county. So let me just share some statistics. A question that I always ask when I'm presenting is, what do you think the value, economic value of veteran services are as a value added to this county? Oscar, you want to willing to guess?
Probably about forty-one million.
See, he's good because he remembered what I told him the other day. And he's right on it. As a matter of fact, we, first of all, let me just give you some opening stats and then we'll get to that one. But that always usually kind of, people can't believe we get that kind of money from VA expenditures in this county. We have about almost thirty-four hundred veterans total population. That's down from four thousand in 1996. Now, all you have to do is pick up a paper and see what's happening. We were losing our WWII, Korean War, and a lot of our Vietnam veterans at a pretty alarming rate. So we're up thirty-seven point one million in that twenty-year span. So we're up to almost forty-two million dollars, forty-one and a half million dollars, and I'm rounding figures off. Guys, that's, in my books, that's an old strong source of revenue. I mean, that's money in people's pockets, that's things that we're not having to pay for as a county and that type of thing. The average McDowell County veteran, if you compare that with the money, we're drawing about a little over twelve thousand dollars a year. Pretty good money. McDowell County is forty-fourth in terms of the total number of counties when compared to the rest of the counties in the state in terms of VA expenditures. And I know we're not forty-fourth in the population size, okay? We're fifty-first in veteran population, so we're actually getting more money than the actual number of vets that we have in the county. Compensation and pension, let me stop right here and I'm going to throw a term at you right quick. Compensation and pension is a monthly allowance paid to our veterans either for economic need or because of service connection disability, they've been to disconnect, deemed disabled in some form or fashion by the VA. We've increased that just last year alone, that went up one point seven million dollars. That's straight up money. That's not services added, that's money in people's pockets. In the last four years, that's gone up six point four million dollars. So that's what they're taking out, going to Dollar General or Ingalls or something like that. The amount of value in terms of medical care, now we're real lucky, guys. We've got one of the top one, or it could be three in terms of when asked by veterans in terms of customer care, right over there in Asheville. People complain about the VA, but people drive from Georgia and all over Tennessee and all over to get to our VA hospital. It's almost twenty million dollars worth of medical care. And, you know, you guys run a tight budget, you know, where would we come up with that kind of money if we didn't have that? And a lot of our veterans now are using straight VA medical care and dropping medical heartbeat Medicare because it's that good a quality over there. So we're blessed in that way. I don't have any figures on loans, VA loans, I couldn't tell you how much that is, you know, I'm sure that's an impact as well. We had almost a million dollars with just a little less than a million dollars on VA education that was spent in this county. And the number of new folks that come into our office over there at Senior Center, and believe you me, I'm glad to be over there because a lot of the veterans that I serve are primarily Vietnam veterans, you know, the newer vets are able to come out and do all that gizmo stuff, you know? I just now have come into the real world, you know, with this thing. I had one of those old flip phones years and years, about a month ago. The number of new folks that have come into the office over the last four years, four-hundred-fifty new clients. So there's opportunity here. I don't think we're anywhere near the thirty-three hundred, thirty-four hundred almost. So the thing I present and inform you is that, you know, we've got some good things going on. We've got strong support going for our veteran services. I want you to understand that though, I do this, and I'm not trying to just beat my own chest, but I do this labor of love. You know, if I didn't have my state retirement, you know, it would be difficult for me to do, other than Daddy told me, you do a good job no matter what, to do the type of work that has to be done in order to manage this kind of budget. You know, when I was with the school system, I managed about twenty million dollar budget, okay? All right, this is well in excess of that. What concerns me is I'm only going to probably work another three to five years. When Mama gets done, I'm going to the house, you know, so.
Amen.
Oscar can preach on that one. Our current salary levels though concern me. And I know you guys are, I know everyone, I appreciate what you had, Chairman Walker, recognize veterans. I know everyone in here is behind our veterans. They know the value of what veterans mean to this county, to this state and this country. I know that. I just want to make you aware of some things that probably you guys didn't know about. And to me, just from administrator, this is a strong funding stream that you want to continue to support. So in order to draw the kind of applicant that you want for this position, you know, then hopefully you guys will begin some discussion about that, you know? It's your job, that's not my job. I'm here to just inform, okay? All right? I came into the job, I thought if I can just learn a few key words, buzzwords and forms and stuff like that, I'll switch right over into this and be no problem. Well, I found out pretty quickly that there's a lot of things that I had to hone my skills on. I needed to be a good listener. I needed to be a good problem solver. And I needed to be a strong advocate in order to make sure that we get folks the kind of help that they are entitled to. I'm not out here asking for something that they're not entitled to, I'm just trying to help them get what they're supposed to have. I look forward to continuing working with Waylon, Mr. Woodin, and all of you, and all of you guys out here. I think we've got an opportunity to really showcase what a strong place McDowell County is in terms of veterans. I just want to close with a couple, three thoughts. You know, four years ago, in spite of all that background, I knew zero about the whole process of service connection disability and stuff like that. This whole thing was beyond me. An interview that would like to know a little more, I'd be happy to sit down and talk with you about it. I'm by no means an expert, but I sure know a whole lot more than I did four years ago. The work is so rewarding. Now, I'm going to tell you that it don't put rice in the rice bowl, but it sure makes you feel good when you go home and you've helped a WWII widow who has no family, no advocacy, and you're able to get them some benefits and get some money so that they can make the power bill. That's powerful. It makes me feel good. Mr. Green, I respectfully appreciate the work that you guys did over at the school board, but a lot of my job, to be quite honest, was trying to make people happy. I'm in the business now of helping. It's great. And I'll get emotional probably, but Dad always said, leave the job better than when you got it. And that's part of what I'm here about. Most importantly though, I want you guys to know what's going on. You know, you guys make the decisions, so it's important that you have the facts. Salary's one, just one aspect, but I desire our county to value the VSO position, the Veteran Service Officer position, as an economic piece. It's not seen, I don't think, as an economic piece to our county and to our citizens. My purpose was here to inform you of the importance of the veteran services to county and invite each one of you to support the office to a level that will ensure strong, healthy growth for years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Doug. We appreciate that and this information. We had no idea the impact that takes place and so we appreciate the work you're doing and helping. You mentioned WWII widows who receive, need help and our WIDs Board really appreciates the work you're doing and those men and women fought for us and their spouses did and what better thing for you to be doing is trying to help them when they need it. So we appreciate the work you do and we're with you a hundred percent, stand behind you and your job and the purpose and the goal and what you're trying to achieve over there. We do.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you too. All right, this time we'll go to our next appointment. We have a 5:15 appointment and we have the distinguished Bob Hunter with us tonight and Nora Coffey with us and we had the honor of touring both the Burke and the McDowell, come on up y'all, Burke and McDowell parks, when it lasts thirty days as a board, and just a really good group of people. And so Judge, if you want to go ahead and just talk a little bit about the background, we're here to help celebrate the thirtieth year of the park, the anniversary and we got a lot of good knowledge that day out there on the site, but we don't have near the time we had down there. Spent on it, but so you go right ahead, sir, and we appreciate y'all being here and we're so glad we could celebrate.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board, appreciate it, Ashley and Cheryl. We did have a wonderful thirtieth anniversary event out there and we were thankful that you agreed to come out there. I believe you and Matthew were there and you'd been out there the day before, I think Nora tells me, and so we do appreciate that. And we had Burke County Commissioners, some of them as well, and then the Director of the State Park from Raleigh. And we really had the idea to do that because we were at a board meeting and we meet once a month and, by the way, Randall is our treasurer and Ed Bryan is here also, I believe that's all the other board members that I see. We have several from McDowell and obviously several from Burke. But we were talking about how this park got started and so that led to the thirtieth anniversary and briefly, what happened and it even refreshed my memory. Back in about the early eighties, McDowell County wanted a state park on Lake James and Burke County wanted a state park on Lake James. And Rod Birdsong came to me talking about McDowell's effort and what I had forgotten, the person that talked to him about it, was the Recreation Director from McDowell County at that time, Wayne Tucci, who's no longer with us. And so they came to me and asked me how we can get a state park on Lake James. I was in the legislature at that time and had been there about four years, I guess, about then. And so we knew Burke County wanted a state park also and so I talked to the representative from Burke County, who was my good buddy, Representative Ray Fletcher, who's no longer living, and we both realized that we weren't going to get a state park for McDowell County or we weren't going to get a state park for McDowell County, but if we got together and worked together, we had a good chance of getting one. So Rod Birdsong was the Chamber Director, as I said, Jerry Van Dyke was back then, was I think when we had the groundbreaking with maybe President, my brother John Cook was involved at that point in time. But Ray and I in the legislature, we went to see our mentor, Liston Ramsey, who was Speaker of the House. And we asked Liston, how can we get a state park on Lake James? And I don't know that any of y'all knew Liston, but he did a lot for Western North Carolina and this state and he allowed me to do a lot for McDowell County when I was in the legislature. But he said, well, why don't you ask for five hundred thousand dollars for, to do a study for the park? And so we said, yes, sir, Mr. Speaker, and we asked for that and lo and behold, it appeared. That was 1985. So then we came back after getting that initial seed money to do the planning and asked for the money to buy the land down there. And I think that was about one point two million dollars. We went into negotiations with Crescent, which owned all the land around the lake, as you know, subsidiary Duke at that time, and they kind of worked together. I think they're more separate now. But, so we negotiated and we worked on the park that we have now, which is the Catawba area, near Lake James, near the lake club, golf course there, Marion Lake Club. And so then Crescent came back and said, well, why don't you look around and pick out some other place? Well, we picked out a place on the other side that had more land and more accessibility to the water and they came back and said, oh no, that's going to be for development. You can't have that, we'll let you have next to the Boy Scout camp and the lake club there. So they didn't let us have it. We had to buy it. We just had, I was county attorney back then, we just had a big case before the Property Tax Commission, it's interesting, which I now chair, about the value of that land down there. And I remember the chairman at that time said that one day when we were presenting our case, that was the best land in the state and the next day when Crescent was talking about it, you couldn't do anything with it. But we kind of prevailed, we got the land and so, but it was limited. If you've been down there on the park that's in, mostly in McDowell County, it goes over to Canal Bridge, about a hundred or so acres of the six, approximately six hundred, five-hundred-and-sixty-five of the land there, most of it's on the side away from the lake and of course, nothing's happened with that and we've got to look at that in our master plan. But we were limited with the terrain there and what's there. But we were able to do it and we got the money and it became a part of the, it was the first park that came under the State Parks Act, which I happen to sponsor in the legislature. And it came in and so it was done first class. Everything that's been done to that park is first class. And, but we were limited with the terrain, as you know, we had a small beach area, we had the trails there, Troy Messer made sure we had some horseshoe pits down there, if any of y'all remember Troy, and the facilities, the office. And we, I remember we got a handicap little fishing area there. My mother, Waylon, who was the Site Director at the Senior Citizens Center, came to me and right after we talked about and got that park going, she said, well, you know you've got to have a place for the picnic shelter for the senior citizens and so the Marion Rotary Club donated a good portion of that money, it's the seed money and Burke, Burke Club chipped in and so we got that picnic shelter where we started out that day and still in use. But it was limited and so that went on for a good while and then, I guess about ten or eleven years ago, the park expanded. And so obviously, we didn't have any more land in McDowell County to add to it, but the park that Crescent was willing to sell to the state, and back then Joe Sam Queen and Mitch Gillespie were in the legislature and they worked on it and so we added three thousand acres, three thousand acres, and went from a hundred-foot beach to a seven-hundred-foot beach. And y'all have been down there and seen it now and it's got, it's just a tremendous facility. Again, everything is first class, we're getting ready, the visitor center is being designed but, and Nora can tell you about that and what all's down there now, but it's really a jewel for this county. And we don't think of it as McDowell County's Lake James State Park or as Burke County's. It's our Lake James State Park and I've had the privilege of serving as Vice Chairman of our friends at Lake James State Park Incorporated. Eric Jenkins, who y'all met from Burke County, is our president. And so we work together to do things that the state can't do. There's a lot of things that Nora has that she wants to do, but state government getting it done and with the needs out there for all the parks across the state, it's, it takes a while and some things and that's one thing Nora can't ask you, but I can, that we would really like to have some help from the county. We've got some real needs on some equipment down there, some ATV mules that are just broken down and we need to get a new mule and they're not going to, they're not going to fund it in Raleigh unless we maybe get some seed money. If we could get about five thousand dollars, we think we could get them to get us that equipment that we need. But that's what the Friends Group does. But at that time, Nora, you may want to say something else, but we want to, we've got a little bit of time left and we want to make sure we present this plaque. It was presented down there, but we want to represent it to all of you tonight for your help that you've given over the years and the support that McDowell and gave to that cooperative effort and I would just challenge you to keep working with Burke County. There's so many things going on down there at the lake that if y'all work together, we work together. You've got the Fontiflora, you're going to hear something about that tonight that goes through there, that comes through this county. You've got the Over the Mountain Victory Trail that goes through this county that's there, the Foothills Conservancy that's added to the park. So, so many things going on and with that visitor center, it's really going to help. The attendance is probably going to really, really increase that year. And let me, let Nora say what she wants to say and we still got about four or five minutes and we want to make sure we.
Well, we can go over a little bit for you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Don't mean to get into much history. Start talking about history and all these things start coming back at us.
Yeah, and this, for those who don't know me, I'm Nora Coffey, I'm the Superintendent at Lake James State Park. I've been at the park for ten and a half years. I've been Superintendent for about four and a half years. So I was at the park before we even broke ground on the new property, so I had a few years to get to know and love the McDowell side and call it my home, which I still call it my home. Judge Hunter touched on so many good points, the collaboration between the two counties, regardless of who was going to end up with the park, it was decades in the making. I mean, gosh, the lake was there since the twenties and people saw the need, there was no public access. Once all the private property was being bought up, there was really a public need for it and the counties came together, the legislators came together to make sure that would happen and I just really hope that local city, state and all the officials can learn to work together like you all have. The Friends Group, the, like Judge Hunter mentioned, Foothills Conservancy, just so many, so many folks and organizations helping us make it the great park that it is for all the citizens of Burke and McDowell Counties and.
We were the park in 2015.
Yeah, in 2014, we were named State Park of the Year and that's been, we've had several in the western part of the state named State Park of the Year, but I was very proud to be leading the park when we were acknowledged for that and that was because of all the great things that we have, because of all the great things that the folks of McDowell and Burke County request. And one thing I would like to mention that you should all be very proud of, I know it seems like the new park is more, it is a little more flashy, there's more land there, we have the swim beach, but by far, above and beyond, the campground that we have at the Catawba River area is still by far the most popular campground. Mr. Creech over there can attest to that. Mr. Creech over there can attest to that. We have those beautiful campsites on the lake that, you know, you, you just can't get in the new park. We've added more camping there in the Paddy's Creek area, but that campground books up several weeks in advance year-round. And with the renovations we put into that campground at the McDowell side two years ago, we are able to keep it open year-round now. I mean, we know the last two Decembers, I think we had temperatures in the 70s. So people want to love the park year-round, and they do. And we still, in spite of what you may have heard, we do get a lot of folks coming out to the old section of the park. Folks in McDowell County come out, they don't want to drive across the county, they hike the trails, they camp year-round, every weekend. Still, we're booking up in that, that side. We've put money back into the old swim beach, and I know a lot of folks in the county aren't aware that even though it says closed to the public, it is available by reservation. So you can rent the old swim beach for private parties, a lot of church picnics, birthday parties, weddings. We just had a wedding there a couple of weeks ago. And that, we just started doing that about two years ago, and it's starting to gain some steam. So if you are interested in that, book your dates well in advance because word has gotten out. And we're going to keep trying to fight for more money to, to keep, keep that, that facility up because it is so well-loved by the community. Just a couple more things that I wanted to, to mention, the Friends Group. I really want to stress how, how grateful I am to the Friends Group. And we have representation from both counties, and that is so important because with, with over 40 state park units, the money is spread then. I'm grateful for the State Parks Act because that actually gave us an opportunity for more money. But with so many parks that are aging, we, we can use all the help we can get. And the Friends Group has raised money for different events that we, we hold. But importantly, lately, it's been equipment is so hard to come by, and, and he's right in that, we need that. We, we put to work a lot of young folks and, and older folks in the off-season. We hire 23 seasonals, and those are usually made up of a mix of high school and college kids, as well as several retired folks. And so from, from spring through fall, we bring on 23 additional folks, our lifeguards. They work 40 hours a week, so we're able to work them a good bit. And we, again, folks of all ages in several different positions. So we employ a lot of folks at the park, we have 10 permanent positions, and we hope to get more with the visitor center. Just, I'll briefly touch on that. We are well into the design phase. We hope to wrap up design of the visitor center, which will be at the Paddy's Creek area, and we hope to break ground this coming spring. We'll have probably a small little event for the groundbreaking, but look for your invitation and hopefully sometime in mid to late 2019 for the grand opening and ribbon cutting of the visitor center. That should be a great event. And then the addition of the Font de Flora State Trail. We plan to break ground on six and 1/2 miles of trail that'll be constructed in 2018 as well. So we have so much going on. I mean, we've been building, I think, ever since I got there. We were well into the, the planning phases of the new property, and it has been non-stop. I've had capital improvement projects every year since I've been Superintendent, which is unprecedented. Parks across the state don't get as much capital improvement as we've seen, and that's because of our, our residents, our, our community fighting for what they want. We need a courtesy dock. People remind me of that on a weekly basis. Judge Hunter reminds me of that on at least a monthly basis. And we're working really hard to try and get some grant money to get a courtesy dock in at the new park. The one at the old park is still used quite a bit. That's really important. So, and if, if anybody has any needs, I'm, I'm always willing to listen and, and hear what you guys want. This is your park, I'm just blessed to manage it. So the more people talk to me about projects, the more I talk to the folks in Raleigh, and that's how things get done, that's how things have gotten done, because everybody cares so much about their park. So I want to thank you guys for, for giving me this opportunity as well.
Two quick points before we present this plaque. That, one thing, and I imagine y'all heard it because I used to hear it all the time when I was in the legislature, wasn't any place on the lake that you could take a boat and go and camp and picnic because Crescent had shut it all down. Well, now, we have in the, in the Paddy's Creek area, is it 33?
30.
30. 30 boat-in only. You have to go by boat to those campsites on the Long Arm Peninsula. And so that's really, really something. We're going to have a bridge that's going to go from the visitor center, a foot bridge, and I guess that'll become a part of the trail too, won't it?
Yeah.
Over to the Long Arm also.
That will give folks access to the peninsula. Not everybody has a boat, so if folks want to get out to the Long Arm Peninsula, that foot bridge, either they can hike or bicycle out to the Long Arm Peninsula once the trail's complete.
Yeah. And they can use kayaks or canoes to go from the park, main park over there. And the last one was, oh, the biggest request we have now, and Nora will tell you, is for RV camping. And that's, all these other things are funded. That's the one that's not funded, that's our next on our master list, and it'll be a big project. Don't know when we'll get it, but we can.
Let your mind's agitated, know you want it.
Yeah. Thank you all so much.
Okay.
We're ready to present this unless y'all have some other questions or anything that you would like-
I'll just say Judge, I'm happy to board. And Nora, it, it's just a great situation, what's happening down there and what's occurring. And both of you mentioned the partnership with Burke County. We feel strongly that Burke and McDowell must cooperate, and we've even extended to their county manager and to their board, the fact that our board would love to have a meeting with their board and sit down and just talk about projects that would benefit both counties since we're neighbors. And I, I think that, that dialogue, positive things can come out of that. So our board is very open to discussions with Burke because we have the beautiful lake, and it's in both counties. So we want to do what we can to move the ball forward and, and keep positive things happening. Because the Pisgah Forest is the most visited, was it last year, the Pisgah National Forest was the most visited park in the park system? So you've got people coming in from all over the United States to our counties, and we want to do what we can to-
We're exactly the third in park attendance, aren't we?
Um, we're, we're one of the highest in the West. We have a couple of those parks down there in Charlotte, but we are, we're close to 600,000 visitors a year now. With the addition of the visitor center, the additional camping, the Font de Flora Trail, it won't be long before we hit a million. There are a handful of parks that are up there in the million visitor range, and I, I don't see that, us being far behind that. We're growing in popularity every year. Attendance was up again this past year. And you're right, I mean, people come to this region. We get campers in, in the Catawba River area campground from all over the world. Every summer, we see folks from, from Europe and just out of the country, in numbers higher than I would have ever expected. So not only all over the country, but from all over the world.
Let's see, how do you want us to present this plaque?
We can get our board out there. I see their whole board out here with y'all.
This plaque is really, I think, a beautiful plaque. President Eric Jenkins found someone to do these, and so-
Judge, have you got any of your board members, friends of the-
Yeah. Annette and Randall.
Let's get them back.
Come up.
Yeah, we want to get them involved too. Let's get them up here.
How you want to do this?
So this is for our appreciation to all you guys have done.
Let's get you in the middle, let's get y'all out in front, facing that way, okay? Let me get around here. I'm just going to ask you.
Y'all all know Annette, and I know you know Randall.
That's right.
I don't want to know.
Thank you. Did I get it? Mike?
I waited for that click, it just didn't happen.
We really got Raleigh's attention. The director was really pleased that day. I know he's a nice guy. They call him Nora, oh, they call you the queen?
The Empress.
The Empress.
Because we're growing so fast.
And we fight.
It's an inside state park joke.
And that plaque, you need to-
That is-
Mike, where's Mike Conley at? Mike?
And I have, I have our latest newsletter from the Friends Group that we can pass around and drop copies.
We didn't brag about the newsletter. We have the finest newsletter.
Oh, that's-
For Polk, Co., and Ice. It tells what the Friends Group does, it tells what's going on each month at the park. It'll tell you also how you can become a member of Friends of Lake James State Park. It's very inexpensive, and all the money we get goes back into this park, our park.
Thanks so much, Judge. Appreciate you. And friends of the board that are here. All right, Jim, and that's, that's very positive. It's good that in county government, we can talk about trails, state parks, just other opportunities for people to be active and be involved and, and get out. And listen, one problem we've got in our state is obesity. And if people get out and enjoy the trails and, and the other amenities like that, we can cut in on the medical costs going towards the health section. But anyway, let's move on to our next item. We have got, at 5:30, but let's do this, since the presenter is not here, let's go ahead and move on down and go to New Business Item A. We've got Frank and some, some board members here that have got other obligations, so we need to go ahead and be respectful of that. So Frank, if you don't mind, come on up to podium, sir, and whoever else is with you right here. And this is concerning the Font de Flora Trail Grant Request.
State Trail.
State Trail.
That's, that's a, that's a big part. If I could have the other Trails Association Board members that are present come on up.
And introduce the board members too.
Sure. Buzz, Buzz Agony, Oscar Creech, Brett Elliott, and of course, y'all familiar with me. And so, but we just, we're here, one, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have concerning this $5,300 grant request. This money is, Heather Cotton drew up the grant, but it had to be a nonprofit, independent group to go on the grant that was presented to Duke Energy. She asked if the Trails Association would assume that responsibility, and she drafted the grant, which was approved by Duke to the tune of about $50,000. And so we have to put up a match of $5,300, and that's why we're here, is to ask that you consider doing that. Now, what that grant will do, will pay for the master plan from the Burke County line to the McDowell house. And so all of these trails we're talking about coming through the, the state park and how we're going to lay all of this out. But I think each and every one of you are beginning to see what an economic engine we are creating here. And this will drive this county for generations to come. Because when you look at things like the Creeper Trail in Abington, Virginia, or the Swamp Rabbit Trail that runs from Traveler's Rest to downtown Greenville, what an economic impact that it's providing for their county. And when we are able to provide connectivity from Burke to Buncombe County, and, and we always will be tying in the greenways along the way, so that, that will be a part of the Font de Flora Trail. But when we can do that, and someone can come in, and we have the most magnificent natural resources in this county of any place. I've been all over the world and never seen anything as magnificent as what we have here, whether it's the lake, whether it's the mountains, whether it's the hiking and biking trails. But we got 75 miles on our master plan for the, for the trails. So we're here asking for your support on this and to consider approving the $5,300 grant request.
Okay. At this time, we'll have Ashley, you need to add anything, Ashley? I go right ahead, sir.
I think it's, just a comment, it's a great opportunity to partner with the city who would help administer the grant in coordination with the Trails Association, but also some of the things that we've noticed in current and past trail projects where we haven't had master planning done, and it's been just guessing on maps or whatever, we've been at a disadvantage. So this will help greatly to have some of this done for future planning. So it's, I would say money well spent.
Other comments, questions? I would say this, to, to get $50,000, I spend $5,300 any day of the week to get $50,000. So it's sort of a no-brainer from the economic side, and as both of you have stated, the master plan is essential.
Yes.
Anything, any organization needs to have a master plan, you need to know where you're going, it may take phases to get there, but you need to plan it.
And the one thing that this is doing for us is that Duke Energy is seeing that we're very serious about what we're doing on our side of the county. And so that frees us up to be able to gain access to a lot more Duke funds than we've ever had before.
That's a key point.
A big deal.
Key point, too.
Yes.
You just made. I, I know our board is 100% behind the Trails-
We appreciate that.
And, and I, I don't doubt one minute that we're not trying our very best to expedite and move forward opportunities for people to have recreational activities to participate in. So comments by board members, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we grant them the $5,300.
Okay, I got a motion.
Second.
Second. Discussion? All of those afraid of motion, say aye. I oppose the outside. And we want to say, you're volunteers too. So you're out working and spending your time to try to get money so other people can have infrastructure and trails to enjoy, so we appreciate it, man.
We appreciate you. Y'all have a great day.
Y'all too. Okay, this time we'll move to item C on our appointment schedule, and this is the Mary, manufacturing, not just in Mary, but statewide, so-
That's the item we deleted because Chuck couldn't be here.
Oh, you're not going to just present it? Okay, I thought you said he wasn't going to be here.
No, I'm sorry.
All right, strike that.
He was the hole, and he had to be there.
All right, the presenter will not be here. Duly noted that the whole item's now off the appointment schedule. Let's move to item A. This would be the Transportation Department update. Mr. Wood, you go right ahead, sir, and anybody else present, you'll introduce on that topic.
Right, yes, sir. This is something that we keep chugging along with, maybe not a good pun for transportation, we're not doing trains, but there's a lot of planning and work that's going on, on the staff level in between these meetings. And it's not as much happening here as, as much as in our DSS department with the folks that have been doing transportation. There are drivers and other staff for many years who are doing a lot of work on this. We've also had a lot of help from Lisa Sprouse, the director, and also from Randall Conley, who had to leave. But they have all been doing a tremendous amount of work, answering questions from the state, going back and forth with rules and regulations and understanding what all this will have to look like effective, really, July 1. So you, you have in your packet a lot of policies, and we would ask that you do sort of a first reading of these, and over the next, next month, in your free time, I guess, read them. But we are required to have these adopted, and we would ask at the December meeting that you have a great focus on transportation, where you would be approving the policies and procedures, the Transportation Advisory Board, and hopefully meeting the new Transportation Director. So it would definitely be a great opportunity to have a tremendous focus on that. I mentioned the Transportation Advisory Board. You authorized last month for us to be advertising that, those positions. We have been receiving applications, and you do have the bylaws, proposed bylaws in your packet. They're slightly adjusted based on some feedback, but again, they're still subject to your approval and revision, so please take a look at them, and if you have any questions, comments, et cetera, before December, please let me know. But again, we're doing a tremendous work, amount of work, the staff is, and they really need to be applauded. You know, these are your, your drivers, your schedulers, anyone that has a hand in this function is really chipping in. We've had a lot of folks that have served in a different capacity in our Transportation Planning Board, which is essentially a separate nonprofit, and Wayland has served on that, that have been, have offered to help as well. So there's a lot of folks in the community that want this to succeed, and so I think that's been made evident for many years. And so there's going to be a lot of people, you know, volunteering the help, or offering help or suggestions or whatever. So it's not something that we're having to do on our own, so that's, that's always good. So not looking for any action tonight, but again, looking forward to next month, hopefully be introduced to the Transportation Director. We would ask, he or she would probably ask and go over some of the policies and procedures, but ask that you approve those, and ask that you make the appointments to the Transportation Advisory Board. So we'll have- So not looking for any action tonight, but again, looking forward to next month, hopefully be introduced to the Transportation Director. Uh, we would ask, uh, he or she would probably ask and go over some of the, the policies and procedures, but ask that you approve those and ask that you make the appointments to the Transportation Advisory Board. So we'll have a really good chunk of our meeting dedicated to that. So any questions on where we are? Not a lot of action tonight, but a lot is happening to get us to a lot of actions. It's all very positive. Uh, the state person is coming back after Thanksgiving towards the end of this month and they're very happy with the feedback they're getting and the comments and, and everything from, from our side, so they're very positive towards it.
Okay, well, look forward to more information next month and that gives us time to actually read. I thought Ashley, I got the memo today that said, uh, you know, we'll be voting on this tonight and this policy, and I said, "Well, I've not even seen the policy." I said, "We don't act like the federal government. We'll at least read what we're gonna vote on."
Yeah, we had to push back on the state a little bit because they're, they're pushing us to move and we, so we need time to process some of this and they said, "Okay."
Okay, good, good deal. We'll, we look forward to next month and, and more good information for the public to come. All right, let's move to our next item under old businesses, will be a shooting range update. Uh, Mr. Wooten, go ahead, sir, and lead us out.
Yes, sir. Uh, after last month's meeting, Commissioner Brown, uh, Mr. Harmon and I traveled to Raleigh and met with some of the key staff at, uh, North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission to talk about this project. It was a, uh, I think a very productive meeting, uh, just getting on the same page with the, with the topic and we made clear some of the thoughts that we have heard here and some of the expectations and vice versa as well. So it was, uh, a very good, uh, time to really understand the process from their point of view. Uh, there is federal funding involved and sometimes that can slow things, uh, but we are proceeding. Uh, hopefully we'll have the, uh, sound test within the next couple of weeks. This is an independent sound test, so it's not, uh, wildlife folks out there, um, you know, doing this. This is a firm they hire to come in and do, uh, independent, uh, tests and independent results and then those are analyzed and presented at a public meeting. So it's a very formalized process at the beginning and then hopefully that process goes well and then the Wildlife Resources Commission would then take all those comments from the public. They would take all these comments of, uh, and discussions that they've heard from our point of view and then vote on whether or not to proceed. So, uh, we're very, uh, their staff, our staff, commissioners here are very hopeful that it keeps working and I think they, what I've heard, the feedback we got is they were very happy to have a committed local partner. Because sometimes they will just pick out a map or a county or wherever on the map, uh, and say, "We think we should be here," and they go to that local government and they're not always have a good reception. And so we actually went to them, you voted unanimously to approach them and that means a whole lot and so that will carry us much, much further than-
And the letters of support from the different agencies-
It's meant a whole lot.
-in our county who want this to happen, uh, I think is, is a very positive, is a positive signal to Raleigh.
Yes, sir. And you, you do have, and again, no action, uh, but just a draft, uh, MOU that they've, uh, put forward and it just explains some of the expectations. Essentially, they build it, we maintain it, but they also mentioned at our discussion, if there's, uh, major capital items, they will come back and assist on, so it's not, uh, necessarily something that we're on the hook for forever as far as repairs to facilities, uh, but more so for ongoing maintenance, uh, range, safety officer and that sort of thing.
Commissioner Brown, you were there, can you, you have anything else you need to-
Actually, just like, uh, Ashley was talking, they, they did make the commitment to us that this would be a partnership with them and that, uh, they would, of course, uh, in the event of problems that arose, uh, later on down the road, you know, they would be coming back and, uh, Wayland would come back and, uh, bear the cost on repairs, uh, in that respect. And, uh, so I think they are excited about working with us and they're excited about, uh, bringing a range here if, if everything works out and, uh, we're certainly excited to be working with them.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Other comments by board members? Okay. If there are none, let's move to our next item. Uh, item C under old businesses would be the courthouse project update and, uh, for the public, we met an hour earlier with Architect Today and Walk Blue Facility and so Mr. Wooten, uh, go ahead and lead off from there.
Right, I'd just reiterate, um, several months ago, the board authorized moving forward with the courthouse project and so the main primary focus has been an additional courtroom, uh, window replacement and HVAC replacement. And so that has been the scope for the project for the most part. And, and when you get into a project, you'll say, "Well, gosh, you know, this is a good time to maybe look at it. This is a bid alternate or whatever," without growing the scope out of control. And so we've been, uh, talking about that, uh, on the staff level and with you this afternoon. It's a very complicated project. You have a building, this is Captain Obvious here, but when you have a building that's occupied by people that, uh, you know, when you're trying to do a renovation, you, you have to be careful how you proceed. So that, we're in that stage now trying to plan the project where it's minimal impact and so we'll be working on that, uh, recommendation and plan over the next couple of weeks.
Okay, sounds like we have more information to come, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Comments, questions by board members? Okay, there being none, uh, let's move to the next item, uh, under new business. We've already handled item A, let's move to item B, administrative items. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Wooten, list out on this.
Yes, sir. Uh, you have quite a few items and most of these are from the Finance Department. You have, uh, and if it's okay, maybe we'll just break it up. Um, you have two leak adjustments from the Nevo Water System, uh, and you have the letters there from the, um, from staff and some from the, uh, the water customers. We would ask that you approve those adjustments.
Okay, Jim, and, uh, you've had an opportunity to look at those and, and ask questions prior to tonight. What, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion we approve the leak adjustments. Second.
Discussion? All of those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, you pose like side, okay?
Then you have, uh, maybe the next two groupings can go together. Uh, you have two project budget ordinances for the, uh, KBR Reynolds Community Paramedic Expansion and you also have the Ethan Allen Building Reuse Project and then, so that's starting two projects and then closing out projects. You have the, uh, Universal Career Pathways Project, Commerce Fellows, the Outdoor Learning Center Project, the Jail and Courthouse Edition Renovation Project, uh, associate, uh, various school projects and the first KBR Community Paramedic Project.
Okay, Jim, and you've heard those, you had opportunity to look at those prior to the meeting tonight. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion we approve the budget ordinances and also the closeups.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, second discussion. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, you pose like side.
And then, well, we have, uh, wait until November to have the first, uh, budget amendments. Um, and I'll, just briefly on these, sometimes, uh, we kind of get automatic at the staff level. Uh, you, we do want to make sure they're, they're understood, uh, before you approve them, but, uh, you know, these allow transfers in between, uh, departmental budgets, um, but also, uh, if we have to appropriate unanticipated revenue, sometimes that requires an amendment as well or unanticipated expenditure. So these are things that we don't necessarily plan for that happen during the year. So if it's okay, I'll just start, um, going through and reading, uh, GF1, which stands for General Fund One, uh, appropriates anticipated sales tax reimbursement. GF2 appropriates fund balance for prior year loan proceeds and current year loan proceeds. General Fund Three appropriates NC Forest Service, S-MAT funds donations and transfer between line items and emergency services. Uh, GF Four appropriates fund balance for unspent funds from the prior fiscal year for the library. GF Five allocates granted asset and af- asset forfeiture for the sheriff's office. GF Six allocates fund balance for unexpected funds from FY17 for DSS. GF Seven allocates fund balance for unexpended funds from FY17 for the senior center. GF Eight does the same, uh, fund balance appropriation for prior year from soil and water. GF Nine allocates grant fund to the transportation function. Uh, GF Ten transfer funds between line items and recreation. And SP One amends the school project fund for school projects.
Second. Okay, you've heard the, uh, from our county manager, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve General Fund Transferer's Amendments One Through Ten, SP One. Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, you pose like side, okay?
Okay, and I think that's all we had on our admin items.
Okay, let's move to item C, uh, tax matters and, uh, I've got on my computer, it, when I go in there, it takes me to the-
I just, I just noticed that the, um, the bookmark is, uh, corrupted, I believe.
I've got, you gotta scroll down, it's on there.
It's on there?
It starts on page, we apologize for that. Page 164. Uh, one, page 164, and these are-
Okay.
Somewhat typical tax matters. Uh, you do have one elderly exemption that's listed, uh, last name is Wheeler. Uh, and that's up to the board to determine if that's okay. They were unaware of the deadline. But beyond that, you have the typical, somewhat typical, um, releases, uh, refunds and the discovery bills. Uh, you do have a write-off, um, request from the tax collector.
Okay, Jim, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the elderly requests and all other tax matters. Second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, you pose like side, okay? Thank you, gentlemen. Let's move to item D under new business. Uh, this is board appointments and Madam Clerk, this is a second reading, correct? And the sitting, the sitting member is Chris Allison, he has, uh, applied for reappointment, correct?
Correct.
And-
You're gonna have to vote twice and because we also have an alternate seat due to, um, the current member has had three vacant, three absences in a row, so that seat has to be replaced. So the first time you're voting will be for the regular seat and I will tally those votes and I will take that person's name off of this ballot and you then will vote for the alternate seat. Is that-
So voting for the, the sitting position, this is a reappointment, okay? First.
No, that, okay, you, you weren't saying that, uh, any of these had been asked three times.
Right.
No, sir. Okay, that vote is unanimous for Chris Allison, so I will take his name off of this ballot and then you will vote for an, the alternate seat.
And only one alternate, correct?
One alternate. And if you will, just vote and sign just like you did last time. He will take the alternate seat on the ballot.
Okay, all right. Thank you, gentlemen. Now, this time let's move to reports and communications. Uh, the staff and/or board members have anything they need to communicate to the board?
Yes, sir. We had to receive an invitation, uh, from the City of Marion. Uh, there's, uh, a special reception honoring former mayor and current council member Everett Clark. Uh, it's this Friday, uh, starting at three, uh, three to five PM at City Hall. Uh, for, sir, 45 years for the City of Marion, so it's certainly something that doesn't-
I'd say, I dare say that might be a state record.
It's gotta be close.
It has to be, has to be. All right. Okay, duly noted? All right, board members, anything you have got to add? If not, let's move to, uh-
Christmas. Christmas. No, no, we haven't made the fourth.
Okay. All right, let's move to, uh, our public hearing. Anybody present wishes to speak, uh, just need you to come up, write your name and, uh, your topic down. All right, good, and back. All right, we're good. Okay, um, with that, uh, we have conducted everything on our agenda for tonight's meeting. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion we adjourn.
Okay. Second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, you pose like side. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.[1771.53]